And do recall.
We have.
You didn't make that. I needed to have that request twenty-four hours in advance.
I did it last week, yeah.
Yeah, you said you were going to be in.
I'm in Portland at the. What Water and Environment Foundation Utilities Conference, so.
Good conference today?
Very good conference. People from across the nation, so. It's the county's paying for it, you know, so I got the government rate.
Okay, could we go ahead and pull the agenda up so I have something to follow? Or put it on the screen for us, I'm sure you've got it there. Okay, great, thank you. So we're about six oh four. I'd like to call the Mill Creek Planning Commission meeting to order on February fifteenth or February, yeah, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Our meeting is supposed to start at six o'clock. And so we will go ahead and start down our. Agenda, and so do you want to take roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Nolan.
Present.
Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Geiger. Commissioner Gable.
Present.
Commissioner Bryle.
Here.
Commissioner Berunda.
Present.
Commissioner Abrams.
Okay, so we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and. Continue on with our meeting. So the minutes of our January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting were sent out to everybody. The members of the commission have a chance to review those. Are there any corrections or deletions to those minutes?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion for them to be approved, please?
I motioned the minutes for um, February, pardon me, for January twenty twenty-four be approved.
Seconded.
Yeah, we have a motion that's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, so we have an unanimous decision in that. And so. We're going to have a. A public hearing this evening. I guess we'll go ahead and open the hearing at this point in time.
Acting Chair, we do not have a public hearing. We can go straight to briefing and discussion. Uh, starting off with the comprehensive plan recap of the goals and policy.
Yes, so let's go ahead and proceed with it. I just saw the word hearing there, so that's why it messed me up, okay. So we'll go ahead and move into our briefing and discussions, and we have three items on there, so we'll go ahead and get started with those, Sybil.
Thank you. Um, so as a recap, uh, with our. Goals and policy, land use goals and policy. Thank you all for your comment and feedback. We did get. About uh, six responses back. I'm not looking at one person in particular, but we did get. Six responses back. And we have tabulated all the responses in one document. Uh, we'll be going over with uh, all tag. Um, so yeah, so this is a period of discussion, really looking at what uh, your colleagues have suggested to us to including our. Goals and policy. So yeah, um, Andy.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Sybil. I, I think we have a presentation prepared that summarizes some of the main comments. And then maybe we can toggle back to the summary matrix as we go through, so. Um, first, we just wanted to recap a little bit about the joint meeting and. Um, hear from the commissioners on that. You can go back to the agenda, thanks, Sybil. Go back, thanks, sorry, back to the agenda. Ooh, so many choices. Back to the agenda in the presentation, my apologies. It's the agenda slide in there. There, yep, there you go, thank you so much.
Uh, excuse me, sorry, Manny, can we, uh, can you share the screen? For the Zoom?
Oh, yes, that would help, wouldn't it?
Thanks.
Thank you for the reminder. This is a one-woman show, by the way.
Two, two, I'm right there with you, Sybil. Two-woman show.
Um, okay, let me make sure I have the right one.
Yeah. Is that showing up?
Shows up for us.
Yep, looks good.
Okay, great. And then we'll talk a little bit about, we've prepared a summary of what we heard on the feedback that we received. As Sybil mentioned, we got comments from six commissioners. So we'll talk about that for a few minutes. And then uh, Andrew Oliver from Leland Consulting Group is with us remotely. And he's going to talk about the economic development element and. Give an introduction to that, which is the next element that will be bringing uh, goals and policies to you for review. So, let's go to the next slide, Sybil. Also Kara Donovan is here, uh, online listening in. Okay, thank you. So the first thing we wanted to do is just allow a little bit of time to recap the joint meeting discussion, and you go to the next slide, we have some. Key takeaways there, so. Uh, we uh, received a consensus-based uh, direction from. This, the Planning Commission and City Council that we should further study a one hundred percent rezone. Of the Mill Creek Boulevard subarea, um, as was determined. Is needed to meet our growth targets for um, Mill Creek. So we'll be looking into uh, that study in the coming weeks and bring back the results to you. Um, uh, some of the key topics that we heard in that meeting was just. Kind of checking in on property owners' plans and if we could learn anything more from them. About their plans for the future, uh, making sure that we're doing tax revenue calculations, so we understand what the. Revenue benefits of, of redevelopment in that area might be. Um, we talked a lot about the importance of design standards and having a quality redevelopment effort in that area. That's representative of Mill Creek. So that was an important topic. Also, it was mentioned that there's very strong need for senior housing in Mill Creek and for having a broader range of housing choices. And then we did talk about implementation strategies, things that could be done to help um. I guess incentivize or uh. Activate redevelopment to occur, so things like, we talked about the CIPA Planned Action Process as a way. To help um. Development, you know, along in terms of its approvals and permitting process. We talked about things like. Public investments in infrastructure, maybe improvements around that pond area, you know, things that the city could apply for grants for. Or put away, or um, allocate funding for to. Um, make improvements that then would help bring developers in and take some of the burden off them. For uh, the costs of some of those improvements. We also talked about regional stormwater facilities was another item that we talked about. So that's, that's our recap, and we just wanted to open it up to the commission for a few minutes to just. Add any comments, um, your takeaways from that joint meeting.
Sorry. Um, I'm just curious, when you're talking about the development plan and the payment. Of the various developments that occur, can you explain to us a little bit more about? How that's costed out and who pays for what and.
Yeah, so what we're doing as part of the comprehensive plan is. Primarily just an analysis of what future development might bring in that area. We're not actually proposing to do the development and, and, or proposing that the city does anything. We're just. Kind of in a hypothetical way, understanding how that could happen, what the tax revenue that might be generated from that would be. What some of the um, implementation strategies might be associated with that. So um, the future would be completely based on willing, willingness of property owners to. Redevelop their properties in the future. There's no. You know, mandates that that has to happen. It's really what property owners want to do. And so when each property owner decides that they, they want to change or redevelop their property, they would come in with a development application process. That would go through review at the city and it would include design review a- as well. And then um, there would be, you know, discussion of what types of improvements they would need to make um, as part of their development project. To pay for on their end. Um, and then I think, you know, in the interim, there is a strategy out there that we talked about. That maybe the city could look at applying for some grant funding or look at funding sources to do. Some of the infrastructure improvements like street improvements or the stormwater pond area, making some improvements around that. That would be, you know, based on if funding, you know, became available or priorities of the city and capital investments. Um, those kinds of things, but it's a very long-range, twenty-year picture, right, of what might happen in that area. Does that help answer the question, Commissioner Abrams?
Yeah, I just, um, I've mentioned before. Uh, the issue around the subarea that we're talking about, that what I'm calling the box. Um, and there's a lot of um. I don't know, private older owners.
Right.
And they, it seems to me that they're gonna have to approve or concur or agree, however you want to describe it. Um, the um. The um, potential redo of that area. Am, am I off base or am I?
If I may.
Yes, go ahead, Sybil, yeah.
To quote Clay at last week's meeting, right, all that we're doing, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to lay out a policy. The foundation for the next twenty years. We as a city do not have control over. Property, uh, private properties, neither do we have control over the market. What we have to do is make sure that we have policies that will help developers actually develop what we are trying to envision. Right, so that, that is our purview. That is the land that we're trying to set here. Either. Let's say if uh, the grocery store decides to move out or consolidate with a different grocery store. It, actually, we don't even hear about it till it's, it's, it's done, because it's a corporate decision. All that we want to do is make sure, make sure that when that happens and that building becomes avail- available. We have laid down development policies, ideas for what potential, what that area could look like. That is, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I was very pleased to see the council go with the hundred percent rezone. As a possibility, because without that, we pretty, that was pretty much pointed out, we can't get where we go to sixty percent. But we might make it by an inch, so it's really good to have that option available for the, the community and us as a planning commission and the council. To be able to uh, do that hundred percent rezone of the Mill Creek Boulevard.
At least to allow us to continue exploring it, right, that that is up to one hundred percent, right?
Yes.
That that's still an option. Uh, one thing that I, I did want to make sure I understood was that they, they did mention several times maintaining. Control over what's allowed to go in, and I want to know what is really the boundary on that, and. If you had any explanation, maybe for more along the lines of, do they mean, because if, in the end, they have to approve everything. But they're also bounded quite a lot by what they would legally be allowed to reject, I suppose. If it's within the boundaries of what falls within our design standards, falls within the zoning code and our codes and things like that, so. I, I guess, um, did you have any further input on what it means to control that um, at the council level, I suppose?
I think we need to explore that as part of looking at the implementation strategies and. As um, Sybil mentioned, Clay White, who is going to be consulting with the city again. Um, has, I think he'll be good to talk to in terms of, maybe we want to look at having a development agreement process. For projects in that area where there's flexibility to work with developers on what we'd like to see. As far as the outcomes of their project and as part of that, have conditions of approval or amenities that might be requested as part of their. You know, their proposals, so we can look at some different options for that, other than just. The code parameters and the design standards in the code, which is really what you have in terms of regulations to control development, right?
Right, and that, that's just if we, if we would, if we would allow all of it to be nineteen-story housing, which. I, that's not even a thing we're actually discussing, but anyway, we had allowed that, then. They wouldn't have any legal recourse to stop it, other than, I suppose, rezoning quickly.
Uh, and let me just.
So.
Yeah, let me just clarify that absolutely, we're not talking about nineteen stories, we're talking about.
Absolutely.
The podium, yeah, the po- wood frame over concrete podium type of construction, that's very common throughout the region and. Is really the, the maximum allowable height for that, based on fire code and international building code right now is seventy-five feet. To the top floor.
So seven stories, five over two?
Yeah, five over two, exactly.
Okay.
Um, unless there's, there are some uh. Improvements in cross laminated timber, timber technologies, but you know, we're not seeing that on the horizon or anything.
And that, and that would require us to change code too, so.
Right, exactly.
And we're not doing it until we want to, so.
Yeah, exactly. And I just wanted to point out too that um, you know, it was very helpful to have the gentleman from Main Street Properties there. Because he had ta- he talked a lot about how they interacted with other cities when they were developing other projects in Woodinville and Bothell and. Kenmore, and many times he mentioned the development agreement process, so I thought that was. It shows that that kind of a process can really work, you know, so I thought that was good.
I think one of Mill Creek, one of Mill Creek's biggest challenges will be in both Bothell and Woodinville, the city owned a considerable piece of property.
Yeah.
That they could, they could do what they wanted. Whereas here, the city doesn't own a piece of property.
I, I think within the boundaries, we own this building, right?
Well, we, we own this.
And, and the north.
And then the um, the wetland.
Oh, yes, the, the retention pond, right?
The retention pond, sorry.
That's where we'll put the nineteen-story building.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
And you own the.
No, we will not, no, we will not.
Did you, did you say that you own the fish, that Mill Creek owns the fish and wildlife as well in the sheriff's department?
No, we do not, the, the property is just the pond.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Brice, to also add to what uh, Mindy also uh. Said is remember our target, right? There, there's a set target that we have to hit with our employment uh, housing. Right, so the subarea, the reason why we picked that area, right, it's because we want to meet that target. There is not anywhere in Mill Creek that we could, that could help us to reach that target, right, so. It's, it, we're, it's not gonna over exceed, well, we cannot over exceed, because that, there has to be a lot of factors. Taken into consideration, and this is what we can, we can do to meet the target that, that is also helping us set the policy. That we have to take a look at.
Right, and that, the, this area in particular is uh, being reviewed under this, because we. Believe that there's a potential higher, better use for it, uh, compared to, say, knocking down the neighborhood that I live in and putting in housing. Right, like, no, that's. Single-family housing that we have in the city is to be retained. This is about adding somewhere where right now there's maybe. Underused uh, light industrial and commercial. Um, so those are the, the reasons why this area in particular is being looked at. As compared to other parts of the city, or making all of the single-family homes zoned for townhomes or something like that, right? Like, that, that would, that'd help us hit zoning numbers, but that's not what we've decided we want. Is to replace all of those with those kind of housing instead.
Any other comments about the council meeting and presentation? And I want to second, it was.
I'm sorry, I did too. I wanted to say something, that's okay. I just have a couple of questions. One is, um, they had talked about the aging population, of course, with the baby boomers. And someone had mentioned at the last meeting about um, senior housing, and I'm just kind of curious, how many senior housing facilities do we have? And are they good revenue generators?
Do you know, Sybil, I mean, Maravida is senior, right?
So, um, the senior housing we have is, it starts with a C, right?
Cozier.
Cozier, yeah.
And what about the place next to the farm? I can't remember the name of that one.
Vintage?
Yeah, vintage is also this, yeah.
There's also one up on Hunter's, Hundred Thirty Second, or no, past. The northwest corner, this is an assisted living facility up by the Monterra Apartments.
Is that the average amount of units for a city the size of ours? Is ask, is inviting more seniors, senior facilities, is that too many? You know what I mean? Is it reasonable to add more? Senior centers for this population?
Yeah, in, uh, in general, across our nation and world, we're experiencing a very high cohort of people retiring. And wanting to age in place in their communities. We sometimes call it the Silver Tsunami. Because of, of the silver-haired people like me, my hair is silver if I, if I didn't take care of that. But the, that group of people is one of the highest cohorts in, in the US in terms of generation. So, a lot of people are looking for options. They want to stay in their community, they're looking for ways to do that, but not have to take care of their single-family house. So, it's, it is a common need, and I don't think there's a formula related to how much you need, you know, in each community. It really depends, but you have a very desirable community with a great golf course and other amenities, so. I wouldn't be surprised if it's, it's a desirable place for seniors to want to retire, you know.
And not only, oh, go ahead, sorry, you're finished.
Thank you. Is it a good generator, the, these uh, retirement homes? Revenue generator?
You know, I'm not, I don't know about that. I do know, as we showed in the presentation, that mixed-use development. And where you have, you know, multifamily development over active use, like at the farm, generates more taxes than. You know, on average, just single-purpose office or commercial uses, so, and that's just because you have more people paying property taxes, right? So, yeah.
I was just gonna mention addition, in addition to people deciding to age in place and stay in, or instead of moving out of their second, their two-story home. And into a rambler, they instead move into one of those uh, uh, return, what's the correct term? I don't want to say retirement.
Active living.
Active living, okay. Um, in addition to that, even my next-door neighbor, her mother moved into Cozier. So that she could be nearby family, uh, when she'd been down in, I think it was like Puyallup. So she moved into the area. So I know there's other people that move to be close to their, their mid-range age family, I suppose we might say. Um, so there's all kinds of options out there for why someone might want to live here despite being over sixty. I don't know the age range we're really talking about, but I know I'd tend to be here after sixty, so. Um, I don't know about seventy, I don't know if we make it that long. Maybe I'll still be here, but. As, as a, as a bunch of dust, so, uh, well, anyway, okay, thank you.
I, I wanted to ask my second question was, um, could you clue me in a little bit? Um, I know it's not part of the subarea zone, I, I know it ends at the pond, but that land just south of the pond, between that and one sixty-fourth. Is, could you tell me the status of the land? I know they talked about that it, they're good generators of businesses, have pretty good flow. Um, I, I just envisioning.
The areas south of one sixty-fourth where QFC is?
The, on the corner, on the same side of the street as um, the pond.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the gas station and all that. I keep envisioning that as a, I know it's not the subarea, though.
Well, there are, yeah, there, no, it is part of the subarea.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, there are active, I mean, obviously the gas station is very active, and I don't foresee that that would redevelop anytime soon. People need to buy gas, right?
Yeah.
Um, but there are some active businesses in those buildings, but the one, what's the, the um. The Haven, thank you, that was recently uh, vacated, right, so it's not operating. And then there are some unoccupied spaces in that area, so, you know, that just tells us. Maybe there's a need for some change there to help activate and make those businesses thrive, so that's, that's all we really know.
Well, thank you. I think, I'm, what I'm visioning is, it, it's great, the, the downtown, this Main Street is such a walkable area. But there seems to be no place to just rest, you know, no place to hang. And it, it's just a dry, it seems like a drive-through community, even though it has a great walking area. And so my, my vision is, is. Or my thoughts are just south of the, the pond is creating land around there, just vacant land where people could actually meet. You know, where they could have a, a soul to the, a heart, not just a, a walking soul, but a resting soul for the community.
Right, and that, and that is part of the uh, placemaking aspect that uh, was presented last week, right? Most of the uh, new development that, I, I keep forgetting names. That a developer, Main Street developed is, is placemaking, right, a place where people can gather. Uh, we, we have that with um, the Starbucks, in front of Starbucks in Town and Country, there's that area where you can sit. And enjoy your day and then move on. Um, so that component of placemaking needs to be emphasized in our policies.
I might also add that um, staff has been involved in some very preliminary discussions of what a possible. Master plan for subarea could look like and what sort of features could be there. And one of the things we had discussed is creating a sort of civic plaza, that would provide that, that place to gather. You know, farmers' market or to rest, relax, just us, and really create that sense of place in the subarea. No, we haven't really talked about where that would go yet, but it's definitely on our radar, is something we want to include.
That's good to know, thanks.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Shall we move on?
We shall go ahead and move on, Andy.
Okay, great, well, now we want to. Sybil, if you want to advance the slide to uh, we just want to talk a little bit about the land use goals and policies, and you can go to the next slide. So we distributed these for a comment, and uh, we received comments back from most of the commission, which was great. There were no requested large-scale changes, but a lot of really great language suggestions and a couple of instances where. Hey, this isn't making sense, you know, we, which is a signal to us that we really need to evaluate and change the language to, to make it work. Um, there were repeated references or feedback related to. Um, making sure we're talking about bicyclists or bicycling as well as pedestrians. Think a lot of times in policy, we tend to focus on creating a walkable area, creating pedestrian-friendly street frontages. And I, I think those who bicycle and care about bicycling want to make sure we don't leave bicycle at, bicyclists out, so we're gonna be checking ourselves on that. Um, multiple comments related to um, development, making sure that it's high quality. And I wanted to pause and just see if we could have a, a few minutes of discussion around high quality. What that means to the commission, uh, because that'll help us kind of hone in the policy language and even to the point where we, we might need to take a look at. De- design and development standards and make recommendations for some changes to those, so if we have time. Um, Acting Chair and Chair, if we could just talk a little bit about the high-quality. Um, references and what people are hoping to see related to that, that'd be helpful.
I would, I wouldn't mind starting off, if, I mean, one of the things in the city that I noticed was, is the, the roadway development standards. So we have the setbacks from arterials, and that really does define Mill Creek, because we've pushed back developers. They can't build right onto the adjacent street. That's true of when the Silver Lake Water District redeveloped into residential. They had a buffer between. The housing we put in there, high-density housing, and the main arterial, and so. Uh, that was one of the things we, we pulled out, and I think you said, hey, wait a second, that should be in this deeper. But it's always been part of the policy, because it is somewhat unique in the city, that we require these large landscape buffers. Did the same on the East Gateway Village, where between the development and the housing that was there, it wasn't just a buffer, it was a vegetated buffer. So, that was kind of one of the things I, I caught in there, is this, this idea of both keeping mature vegetation, as well as having these buffer spaces is. Is part of what I think people associate with Mill Creek, and we, we want to add a policy level is driving the, the, you know, subsequent. Regulation that we'll have.
I'd like to comment on that, Matt, because if it, have you, has anyone seen the Vineyard? It's a building, is that in Bothell? Um, it's right across from Helping Hands on Bothell Everett Highway. It's right up there against the sidewalk, and it's just. Overbearing, so it sure is nice to have the setbacks.
So I made a list of this, because I know I put in high quality in my uh, in my comments.
Great.
And, you know, the concept of high quality is like what's beautiful. It's a generic, overly broad kind of statement, and I think it's incumbent upon the commissioners and. And I think it's incumbent upon the commissioners and the, the council to really define what they mean by quality. Some of the things that I mentioned were open spaces, parks, gardens. It's very, I'm very environmental in orientation here. Open spaces, parks, gardens, green roofs, uh, tree canopies, green streets, uh, a hub for culture, learning, work, recreation, walkable districts, artistic and creative building designs, visually appealing, offer, uh, comfort and convenience, safety, environmentally friendly. These are just adjectives that describe what I'm talking about by high quality. They're different, in my opinion, than what someone could define as a boxy structure with cheap-looking facades and cheap-looking interiors. So there is a pretty dramatic difference between those two ideas. I don't know where we're going to end up. But I know that a lot of people who live in the, um, what I'm gonna call the single-family home area are gonna probably have a identification with what I'm talking about because that's why we moved here. Okay, and I think it's gonna be people that are gonna be somewhat hesitant to see a, a boxy concept. Unfortunately, in my opinion, very much similar to what's at the farm. Okay, and so it's up for discussion. Uh, these are just ideas that I'm mentioning. And you want it visually appealing, okay? It wants, you want a visually appealing construct. Some people think Bothell, okay, is visually appealing. I don't consider what's going on in Bothell to be visually appealing. I consider it a bunch of boxes, okay? And other people I've talked to have said they've destroyed the ambiance of Bothell by putting in those large boxes. So it's again, it's a personal opinion. So.
No, that's very, very helpful. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah.
And can I ask a question about that? You know, based on the feedback you just heard there, um, how much of that would fall within our, the codes that with the planning commission purview versus how much of that would fall under the design review board? Almost like maybe part of the master, some of the things you said at the beginning, or like the master, like agreements with the developer about the open spaces, right? I mean, can we mandate open? I don't know, from a code perspective, can we actually mandate you, thou shall have open space? Right? I, I mean, I'm very curious to see what part, what fall under our purview of, of the feedback I've heard so far on the high quality versus the design review board.
Yeah, it's really a two, a kind of a two-tier approach, I would say. So right now, we're working on the conference of plan policies. So we want to have policies that support these values that we've been talking about. And they're written in more of a, a broad, general way, but they're still objectives. They're still written as, you know, aspirations and objectives that we want to achieve. In code, then the code language gets much more specific. And it tells us how wide these landscape buffers need to be, what the landscape needs to be within those buffers and other metrics and requirements. So, so there is a difference in detail, but both are needed. And the planning commission is working with us on the goals and policies right now, so.
So we do have some control over design. Uh, we currently do have some control over design. What I would say is after the com- comprehensive plan update is, is, is done, we have a period of about six months to actually own and into the design and the nitty-gritty of what some of this development style, so idea. And that will come after, that will be, uh, twenty twenty-five. But we have also started throwing out ideas of what other communities have done. And form this code is, is a really good tool to use when it comes to what, um, Commissioner Abrams is talking about. Really looking at the outside facade of it with landscaping and curbside appearances and really the relations between the pedestrian and the building. So that is yet to come. It is mandated for us to, to make sure that we address that right after the comprehensive plan update.
I, I have a question then. It, maybe one thing we could include there, you mentioned art or murals or color or things like that. I know in the past, some government development, and so not necessarily what we're doing, because we're not going to be developing this ourselves. They've put in stipulations that so much of the final budget has to be spent on art. Public facing, the kind of stuff that would be available for the public to see. Is that a type of thing that we could, that we could put into the rules that we're able to set within the planning commission? Or is that more like a city council policy or a design review board policy or something like that where that sort of stipulation might be included?
As, as an advisory board, you can include that as an advisory to the city council, right? We can also support with examples of what other communities have done to really show art. There are grants that we could also look at and really aggressively go after that will entice developers to say, hey, you know, we have this amount of money if you can, you know, incorporate a sculpture or, uh, a mural, uh, as part of your development. That, there are things we can do, um, to advise city council. I don't know if I'm ans- answering your question.
No, I, I think that's good. I just wondered if it was kind of within the purview of what is within our advisory in our, in that way. We can, yeah, we can certainly advise, we can tell them, we think you should put in one, a policy like this, anything we want.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We should have a champagne cake.
Yeah, right, we can say that. And it, they'll say, okay, thank you.
One other thing on that, Matt knows this too. In King County, um, there are required contractual stipulations that are put into various public works contracts for art. And, um, it's not a gigantic percentage of the, the contract, but they are, the contractors are required to put in various types of art activities and structures. And, um, the county was able to, and I assume, Matt, they're still doing it, able to evaluate those designs and then incorporate them into the construction activity. I know what happens in private development too.
With past experience, I know it's a PPP, public-private partnership. Partner, partnership. Um, and that, that is doable, especially if the, the land or the building is owned by the municipality, that, that can, can be done. It's hard for the government to tell a private developer to include art in their development if really we don't have the resources or the incentive for them to, to do that. But yeah.
Well, can't you stipulate that in your rezoning?
Well, we can stipulate it in our policy, right? So remember the foundation that we're laying down as Commissioner Briel said, we can encourage that, right? But it's also.
Yeah, we can research that a little bit and, and look at some policy language examples, you know, which could range anywhere from encourage, you know, public and private art as part of redevelopment to, um, explore a percent for art program, you know, that's, that's required of public and private development. So we need to look at, I think, a little bit more into what's legally possible for that. But I, I think these, this is a really healthy conversation and.
I would think in the comprehensive plan language, it'd be sort of like you said, you know, encourage public art, that type of thing. When it gets time, if we wanted to denote a percentage, that's gonna have to be in the code.
Yeah.
So, um, another thought is I, a vaunted example of something that was set years ago here was that in MCCA in a particular development, you couldn't have the same, uh, floor plan. And I'm wondering if something like that could be established so that you wouldn't have box after box after box. Maybe it's one box and then a differently shaped boxy, yeah, you know, a triangle or something like that. So it's not box, 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 box. If, so that we would ensure we wouldn't do that at least, right? Only one box allowed, um, as an example.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if that's the type of thing that we can, apparently we can advise whatever we want. Champagne cake. I don't think we're.
Take a little bit of a look at what you, what you have now in your design standards and see if there's, you know, what the needs are to improve those. But, you know, everything from modulation along building frontages to variation of the height level to, you know, finistration and how that's handled, those are all things that are commonly covered in design standards or design guidelines, so.
Okay, thank you.
But Alan, I want to thank you for your adjectives you provided to try to define, you know, what's this. Yeah, no. It was a very good starting point for my state, you know, to come up with that. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a lot more to cover, so I feel like we should maybe move on, Chair. Do you agree? Are there any other comments that you'd like to share?
If we move forward, yeah.
All right, uh, one of the things I think we, we were just talking about this, so it was, this is a good segue. Uh, one of the things we heard is we might need to provide a little bit more clarity as to what the difference is between a goal, a policy, and then what specific code or regulations might, uh, look like. So as we just talked about, the goals are kind of the highest level aspirational statement that represent, you know, the things that we want to do to create these long-term outcomes in, in the city and in the community. Goal statements. And then the policies are written to support the goal. And they're a bit more specific. Um, they're more like, written like objectives. They help guide the direction of city decisions and city actions. Um, and so they are more specific than goals, but they don't get to the specific level of detail of metrics or design features. Uh, that we leave for code. So code, code language is very specific, you know, include things like densities and setback requirements and design standards as, as we were just talking about. So hopefully that helps to kind of clarify the differences between those things. Go to the next slide. Oh, sorry, I thought you could change it when you're sitting.
I learned.
Okay, so we just have a few, I want to go through these fairly quickly, uh, so we can get to Andrew's presentation. But we just had a few things that stood out to us that we wanted to talk to you about as far as comments and how we plan to handle those. Um, and by the way, I did just want to mention that we, for the public record and for all of you, we did send out and publish the comments that you all sent in, so everybody can be aware of those. And you can review those i- on your own time, you know, just to understand, um, what your fellow commissioners have submitted. But, um, tonight, we're just gonna kind of hit on some of the high points. So, next slide. Uh, for goal LU five, there was a suggestion to add coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions during annexation. So we will be adding that. We've got some language here around that, that we think works pretty well. Um, so thank you for that suggestion. We think it makes a lot of sense. And particularly when we're starting to think about annexation and exploring annexation in the future, that's going to be important. And I'm, I'm just gonna run through these, but at, at any time, please stop me if you want to make any comments or ask any questions. For LU three point seven, which is a policy, there was a suggestion, which was a great suggestion, to make sure we use the term landscaped as part of the screening between industrial and residential, um, land uses. And I think this speaks to what Commissioner Nolan was saying earlier, that this is a very distinctive quality throughout Mill Creek to have these landscaped buffers and vegetated buffers. So that's an important, uh, thing that we'll be adding, um, to, to the policies. And we'll also add, um, some discussion about the reasons for screening. So visual noise, environmental impacts as well. I'll pause there to see if there are any comments or questions on those.
I'm just curious, does, um, for visual pollution, uh, you know, like light pollution, do you have a down, does Mill Creek have a downward facing light code that requires that?
I'm going to look to staff for that answer because I'm not sure.
You know, I'm not sure. Are you talking about street lights specifically or any?
Street lights and lights on, on multi-family housing and all such.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'll have to look it up. I believe our design, our design standards, you know, I'm not gonna, I don't want to say something I don't know of. Uh, I know there are some things for like our wetlands have to have, um, fa- lights have to camp facing the wetlands. As far as those developments, I, I'm not sure. I'll have to look it up.
Thanks.
Okay, should we move on to the next one? So this one, uh, was around, um, how to handle health, um, community health. And there were a lot of questions about what we mean by health disparities, uh, which I think is, is a challenging situation because we don't have data to really define what that means in this community. It's a recommendation of the multi-county planning policies. Remember, we talked about those from Puget Sound Regional Council and trying to thread those through as appropriate. So we thought maybe better to just use, um, some language around improving healthy, active lifestyles in ways that we can, can do that through policy. So encouraging, um, a mix of land uses that, we've got two encourages there, so we'll probably need to fix that. But, um, having land uses in mixes that encourage walking and bicycling, uh, that support healthy, active life cycles, uh, lifestyles, excuse me, was, was one of the thoughts. And we can also add a policy focused on supporting access to sufficient healthcare and related public services, which is great. I mean, because we do have, um, healthcare, various medical and dental offices throughout town center and in this area that we're talking about bringing more residents to. So it's an easy checkmark policy that we can achieve, I think, if we added something like that. But I'd be interested in the commission's perspective on this.
Does, are, um, are there already policies addressing ADA access to trails?
Those, yeah, that is all handled through code. There are specific international building code and other code requirements that address ADA. So, yeah, but, you know, and, you know, that's a really good point though, Commissioner, because you can do, you can meet ADA, you can comply with that. But then you can also kind of go beyond that and strive for a universal design, we call it, which is really just making sure that your design is accessible to all people that are pushing strollers or people that are, you know, um, maybe they don't have a disability, but, you know, they walk more slowly or whatnot. So that, that would be things like avoiding stairs at your entry of your building to the extent possible. So I think, you know, it's a good point, especially since we're talking about aging in the community and making sure that we're a, a, a friendly community to all. Maybe pushing that a little bit with some universal design policy could be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, couple more. So we had just a question about the goal versus policy language around, I think there was a question about terminology character here with LU dash one. So we'll be, um, addressing that. I, if, if there is an interest in using the term character, there is some guidance out there now that is stating that we need to be careful with how we use character when we're talking about neighborhoods, residential areas because some have interpreted that to mean that we only want a certain type of people that are living in those areas. So it's, it can be thought of as biased and discriminating language. So we have to be careful about that. And so if you, if you see us kind of shine away from using the term character, that's why. But we're trying to find other ways to express the same, um, values in what we're saying, so hopefully that's helpful.
How about ambience?
Ambiance is good, yeah. Livability, um, community, uh, sense of place, things like that, so, yeah. Okay, thank you. And then including references outside of the element, we are going to do some things where we have call-out boxes and notes in the plan that reference other, um, related goals and policies that are in other elements. So I think that'll help, might have been something that you all were asking for, is how does this relate to transportation and other elements? So we'll try to tie those threads together. We, you might remember that we had a streetscape element in the plan and we've talked about that we're, we're, there are some provisions in that that'll move to. and we've talked about that we're, we're, there are some provisions in that that'll move to transportation and others that'll just move into code, because they really should be in code, because they're about design. And we'll include specific call-outs for environmental features and other elements as you see here. So I think we're just, we just want you to know, we're listening to you, and we'll work on those things. And let's see, I think this might be the last one. Nope, two more, so go, yeah, go back, sorry. Nope, yeah, thanks, six. So, go, yeah, no, you can go to the next one. Thank you so much. Aesthetically pleasing, I think there was, you know, maybe some question about what that means and providing a little bit more description on that. And so we'll provide more specifics. We can also add specific references to the design standards and code that would help to help, you know, further explain what we're meaning when we say things like that. And healthy lifestyle. You know, we, I think they're, hopefully that's pretty self-evident what we mean by that. But I think there are ways that we can provide some call-out boxes or terms that are defined throughout the plan to just help people know what we're intending when we talk about things like that. Yes, Commissioner Riles?
What exactly are we referring to when we say something like neighborhood livability? I guess maybe I, I want to explore that a little bit so that I, maybe then to help respond to aesthetically pleasing.
Well, yeah, what, what do you, what would you like to think of as far as that means for, what that means for your community? Does it mean that it's, you feel safe walking around? Does it mean that you have places that you can gather with your neighbors and talk?
So, okay, yes, safe, safe, yes. That's one of those that it's so ground level to me that I forget to say it. So, yes, safe. Additionally, things like higher walkability would be good. Say, protected spaces for pedestrians or bicyclists that would be separate from vehicle, powered vehicle traffic. Because that really increases, increases walkability and livability and survivability of being in our neighborhoods. But yeah, it's spaces to be able to meet with neighbors and neighborhoods. I think those would be the types of things that I would see as part of livability, but also access to transportation from wherever it is if I'm living. If I, if I have difficulty getting, if there is a gravel path between me and, between my home and whatever road I need to get going on, then I better not be bound in some type of way that I'm not able to take a gravel path. So that type of thing.
Connectivity.
Yeah, connectivity to, and especially if we could to some of those that public transit. Because we've got so many great options for public transit here in Mill Creek, and they're only increasing. That I would love to see that become a more enabled thing throughout the city. Obviously with MCBS, it's quite accessible with what there is coming. The fact that there's going to be two swift bus lines, there's other bus lines, there's, obviously, there's big roads and we have ways to get to them. But also to see that, say, even into the neighborhoods if there was something and into some of the single-family homes, if there was the ability to get on a bus. I know there are bus routes, but they're much more rare than a swift bus.
That sounds like, and I know Kara's taking notes, but that sounds like a great policy or two to include in the transportation element around that. So that's excellent, and thank you for helping to define livability. And that's, that's exactly what I'm hoping is we can have a few call-outs for some of these terms in the plan to help people understand what we mean and specifically what that means in Mill Creek, right? So that's great to help define that, thank you.
For me, livability would include proximity to food.
Okay. Healthy, healthy food or junk food?
Taco trucks in the neighborhoods policy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I like my fellow commissioners' thoughts about green roofs. And green roofs, suggesting green roofs as well as green sidewalks. Is that something that might seriously be considered?
Well, there are green roofs on, I don't know, for QFCs.
Oh.
They're, they're allowed. They're allowed, and they don't worry whether they're required.
Is there any way to give an incentive to get people to?
Yes, one of the, one of the ways that things like that can be done, that I've seen it done is, you know, we can set a base height for redevelopment. Say, say like it's six stories, but we can allow an additional story, seven stories, if the developer provides certain amenities and elements within a list that we might create. And that could include green roofs, it could include public spaces, amenities, could include other sustainability features.
Rain gardens.
Rain gardens, yeah. So definitely, that would be something that would go in code, but definitely could take a look at, at that as part of, particularly as part of Mill Creek Boulevard subarea and implementing that.
That'd be great. Can they even build a restaurant on top of a roof? Is that even allowed in zoning? Can, can you make that happen?
We need to check on that, but I, I mean, you can do it, it has been done. So we need to make sure it's okay to do that here in Mill Creek, yeah.
Thanks.
I had one more comment under the livability concept is that it's safe for the kids to play and ride their bicycles.
That's good.
That is, to me, a big piece of livability. Yeah, yes. Or, or the kids can ride their bike in the street with the parent out there, but it's not a thirty, not a thirty-five mile an hour street people are driving fifty miles an hour on.
The sidewalks throughout a lot of neighborhoods, it's not sidewalks. And despite all signs that say don't park here, they park on the sidewalk all the time.
Okay, all right. The last thing I wanted to touch on is there were some questions around what do we mean by high-capacity transit? And why do we care? Maybe, I don't think that was a question, but just, just to explore that a little bit. So we have a policy that talks about increasing the density of housing and jobs in proximity to high-capacity transit. The reason why we want to do that is, you know, the more that people are, live and work in proximity to the bus rapid transit lines, the more likely they are to use those for different purposes. And as such, the less likely they are to jump in their car and drive. So regionally, collectively, that reduces the vehicle miles traveled by facilitating access to transit. So it's a, it's a best practice that's part of our regional growth strategy. And when we say high-capacity transit here in Mill Creek, that specifically means the swift lines, the bus rapid transit lines. In other communities around the region, it also includes the light rail stations, commuter rail. I guess we, I don't know, we have a streetcar in Seattle, so some of those ferry terminals. But here in Mill Creek, it's, it's your bus rapid transit, or sometimes we say BRT lines. And just so you all know, there is also, as part of this regional growth strategy in Vision 2050, which is the Puget Sound Regional Plan, there's a strategy overall to locate sixty-five percent of our population growth and seventy-five percent of employment growth in, in, in our growth centers and high-capacity transit station areas. That's going to vary community by community, but just so you know, that's kind of a metric that we look at as planners to see how we're doing with that, yes.
But within those areas, is there, so example, this corridor, how wide from there is?
Okay, very good. Well, PSRC identifies it as a quarter mile as being the high-capacity transit quarter. But there, I've also seen policy around a half mile. And a half mile is often considered to be, you know, a ten-minute walk, basically. Even in the rain, people say, oh. But, you know, ten minutes and, and planning for that is, is, is often done, I shall say.
As, as I tell plenty of people here, if you're not willing to do something in the rain, this is not the place for you.
And just to follow up on that, what you just mentioned about the distance away. So in the case of the subarea, would we be able to claim full credit of a hundred percent of that population growth? If we did the full subarea, we get credit for that, to meeting that sixty-five percent target? Or are we going to, some is more than like that ten-minute walk within the subarea, and you don't get to claim that you, you've looked, you've met this policy?
We will, we will definitely get to claim that we meet that, that we're, we're striving to meet that policy. It may, we may not be quite at sixty-five or seventy-five percent for this community, but the idea is that we're trying to meet that region-wide. And so you can think places in Seattle, for example, are going to be much higher, you know, in terms of that. So, so as long as we do the best that we can, it'll be fine. And, and Mill Creek Boulevard, as we talked about, as we've talked about in the past, that whole area, because it's served by two bus rapid transit lines, is the perfect location to have more growth in both residential and jobs because it's got that access to transit. So we will get lots of brownie points for that regionally, for sure.
Can I ask one question for Manny? The, Reid, I was one of the people who brought this up, and I'm totally supportive of our density around the, the BRT. But what does this say for us out one hundred and thirty-second out the farm where we still have some developable property out there? So I don't think we want to exclude the density we could put out there. And so we just want to be careful about exclusive language because that area isn't on a BRT, it's on high-capacity transit, I think at the very end of twenty fifty.
Correct, not within the twenty forty-four horizon. But I, I think we can still mention that there is that planned extend BRT eventually out there. But, yeah, we, I, I think we want to avoid exclusive language, I agree with you. So we'll just take a look through and make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, to use a really bad analogy. But I think increase the density of housing and jobs in proximity to high-capacity transit. That's not exclusive language, language is just aspirational, saying we want to do that where we can. So I think we're okay, but we'll double-check that, Commissioner Nolan, just to be sure.
Thanks.
So Mamby, is there a industry-accepted standard for a half-mile? And why I want to ask this? The Everett School District drew like half-mile radiuses around their schools. And if you live outside that radius, you don't get a school bus. But we live just outside of that. And it probably takes a mile and a quarter, mile and a half to get there because of the, the way the streets are all laid out. So, and you said ten-minute walk. You know, that all has to do with how fast people, is that, is that really, is that a half a mile, a circle of a half mile? In the, in the industry?
That's a really, yeah, that's a really great question, and there are some different rules of thumb about that. We have the ability through our GIS-based mapping and analysis to actually map a ten-minute walk, you know, what, what that would actually be, based on the walking routes, fencing, barriers, things like that. But those things change over time. So often, when we're looking at regulations, we do use the circle, and we say any parcels that touch the circle.
Okay.
Because, you know, otherwise, things change all the time, and it's difficult to regulate that way, so, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Yes?
Since we're talking about and looking at the, what PSRC said about high-capacity transit quarter, since a majority of employees, from my experience, are not wanting to go to mass transit, they prefer the independence of their cars. As an incentive, can the city work more closely with community transit in promoting command, community transits, low-income discount fare programs? And making, maybe even making a code to post those in the multifamily housing and lower-income housing, so that can be encouraged?
I, yeah, I think we can write a policy around that, maybe not that, quite that specifically, but something about, you know, coordinating with community transit and other transit providers to promote their programs and services, something like that.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, yeah. All right, I think, I think that's it, and now we're ready to go to Andrew.
Hello, hi, everyone. Nice to see you again. Sorry, I'm not there in person today. So, one of the things that's on the, you know, in coming down the pipeline pretty soon here is Goals and Policies on Economic Development. That, that will actually follow the Goals and Policies on Housing, which are coming next month. And the following month, April, will be Goals and Policies on Economic Development. So we wanted to talk a little bit about this today, both from a background perspective and also just to get a little discussion going, because I know the council's been talking about this too, and to sort of guide our evolution of this section of the plan. So can you go to the next slide, Civil? Thank you. So there, you know, economic development is, well, I would just start by mentioning that there was not an economic development element in the last comp plan. There were goals and, there were goals around economic development, but no policies. So it was addressed to some degree, but, but this time, we're going to have a dedicated element with goals and policies like, like the other elements. So that's another reason why we wanted to sort of have a dedicated conversation about it. This is a pretty general definition of economic development, efforts to improve economic well-being and quality of life by creating and retaining middle and high-income jobs and growing the tax base through diversification of the local economy. And can you move to the next slide? Thanks. So looking at PSRC and other sort of regional policy guidance, there's a lot of talk about traded and local sectors in, in crafting economic development policies. And so I just wanted to bring up this distinction here to maybe spark some, some thoughts. It's pretty much import, you know, exported and imported thing. So the traded sector are industries and employers that produce goods and services that are consumed outside the region. And, you know, there's, these are sort of general characteristics. Tend to be better-educated workers, work more hours, earn more money. And then local sector businesses, on the other hand, local sectors are things that are produced and consumed in the region that they're made. So this is generally smaller businesses, more locally-focused things such as grocery stores, restaurants, et cetera, physicians, and, you know, they, they don't sort of make as big of a contribution to the regional economy as something like, you know, aerospace, obviously. But they do, and I think this is particularly, you know, important for Mill Creek, make communities distinct, provide, you know, that local flavor and things that are, that are specific to your community and provide amenities for, for people who live in the area. And we talked about this a little bit last week in a joint meeting too, in relation to, you know, the businesses in the town center. So, the next slide. Thanks, Civil. So what is a city's role in economic development? I mean, this sort of goes along with what we've been discussing in general. There's these goals and policies, high-level stuff we're talking about for the next twenty years that is going to be contained in this comp plan. And so what, what types of things, you know, does it make sense to talk about in economic development goals and policies? Well, certainly, supporting small businesses. And that, I think, is something that's, that's been discussed around the, around the new subarea rezone, as well as in the town center. So there's, you know, grant programs, there's things like storefront improvement, procurement that, you know, may be something to think about in relation to the new subarea. Prioritizing local businesses or small businesses, representing in commercial space. Placemaking, something else we've been talking about today already, plazas, walkable areas, places where small businesses can thrive, where you're going to get foot traffic, where people are going to, you know, be exposed to new businesses, especially from the sort of retail perspective, but also just, it's, you know, placemaking as a community amenity, like you were talking about earlier, Commissioner Gable with the, with the wetlands. Sorry, one more second on that one. Thanks, Civil. Partnerships, so Chamber of Commerce, regional employers, developers. I mean, there's a lot of partnerships that can be fruitful for improving, you know, jobs in the city. And, and as we saw already with the goals and policies around land use, you know, talking about what partnerships the city wants to encourage is, is a good, good thing to include in the congressional plan. And then finally, infrastructure. So this is pretty self-explanatory, but, you know, city investment in, in the ability to develop new business, real estate in, in cases where we might be talking about that. So let's pause here in case anyone has thoughts or questions. Otherwise, there's two more sections of this, talking about. Um, uh, talking about some background data on Mill Creek and then um. Uh, some sort of more discussion based questions at the end. Okay, sorry, you can go back one. Thanks. Okay, so um, the next few slides uh, show some data about the current employment and economy in Mill Creek. Uh, this shows your top sectors, this is from the census. Um, and the um. Uh, la- uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics nationally, so um, a high share of jobs in retail. Um, food service, healthcare, construction. Uh, retail jobs are still really strong in Mill Creek, as you can see there in twenty twenty, there was a little bit of a decrease, but much less than we saw in a lot of other communities. Uh, during the pandemic, uh, which is great, uh, construction has tapered off a little bit, that's uh, to be expected with the rise in interest rates and everything. Um, and as, as you're no doubt aware, you know, there's, there's a sort of small base of traditionally white collar jobs. Tech, finance, insurance, real estate, et cetera, uh, in Mill Creek, but it's not, um, it's not an overwhelming amount of jobs, uh, compared to retail and healthcare particularly.
Andrew, are those uh, head counts in those, the left hand scale, is that people?
It's jobs.
Jobs, thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to lay that. Uh, and this one, I, I just wanted to include, um, this is, well. I, I'm gonna preface this side, slide by saying that, you know, counting housing units is pretty easy. Counting jobs turns out to be remarkably difficult. Because uh, you've got jobs, full time, part time jobs, you know, is that one job or two jobs? Um, it's, you know, often difficult to get um, data, some data doesn't include self employment, for example. Um, other data is based on commercial real estate, so how many people work in a place based on how big the building is. Um, so this is actually a different data source, uh, and this is um, uh, survey based data, sort of like the census, but surveys of employers rather, rather than. You know, the population, uh, and. The reason I wanted to show this is because uh, it gives a little bit more detailed uh, job count by sort of smaller sectors. Um, but I, I also noted that, you know, this is showing over a thousand healthcare jobs in Mill Creek. And it may be a little bit inflated, uh, as we were talking about with the staff this week. Um, but what was notable about this data source when I looked at it was that. Um, very few of those were in large businesses, they were all sort of small healthcare offices employing usually fifty or smaller people. Same with food service, aside from, you know, McDonald's and Starbucks, um. Most food and beverage, uh, you know, uh, businesses in Mill Creek are small. And, you know, of course, schools are, are schools, you know, how big they are, but in general, um, you know, it, there's not a, a big dominant employer. There's, there's dominant sectors, uh, but really almost all the jobs in Mill Creek are in pretty small, um, companies.
And Andrew, I just wanted to mention as well. Um, you know, when we're doing our background analysis of jobs, we can certainly use a lot of different data sources and. Attribute jobs to those, but when we are actually trying to meet our jobs targets, you know, we have to be apples to apples with. How P S R C and the county count jobs, so we'll just have to be aware of that as we go along, of course, right? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, and the, the, the total number of jobs in the census and the P S R C, the, the one, the lines we were looking at in the previous slide. Uh, line up very closely with P S R C's covered employment. Um, the thing about that covered employment is that it, it's a pretty broad breakdown, there's fewer sectors, so it can be kind of hard to see, you know. Like nuance between um, different types of professional jobs or different types of um, services. So that's why I pulled these up, but you're right, of course, yes, when we were talking about the jobs target, immediate jobs target, um, that's tracked with the P S F numbers. Um, top employers, uh, according to the, the survey, data axle survey that I mentioned there, Lowe's, Town and Country. I lumped the school district, the schools together, there's a lot of schools, several schools, obviously. Uh, Albertsons and Safeway, so large grocery stores, uh, McDonald's, other chain restaurants. And then uh, government is a big, a big sector, um, to the city and the county.
So, um, looking at this list, then, I, I, I guess maybe, maybe to your point you just mentioned a little bit before. I don't see how that healthcare number correlates, right? Does it even make to a single? Lo- large employers, I'm just curious to.
Yeah, yeah, it was, you know, I mean, the Everett Clinic and, and some others are, you know, have, were coming in at somewhere near fifty or sixty employees. But yeah, most of those were small offices or individual, well, um.
Like dental.
They were showing up in that way on the data as well, but in fact, maybe they all work in one place, but, but for some reason they were broken out by, you know.
Yeah.
Doctor.
I shouldn't have to ask, but is the Swedish, help, the Swedish emergency area over there, is that in the city?
No, that's in Everett.
Okay.
Yeah, Providence, Swedish, yeah, in Everett.
We were, that's one of the things we were worried about is maybe somehow that got counted in the data when it shouldn't have been, so.
I didn't see it in there when I looked, um, the other day, maybe, yeah. But um, I mean, I, I agree, like, like I said, jobs data is tricky, so that, you know, this is. To be taken with a, a bit of a, a margin of error for some of those um, job counts, but. But you're right, Commissioner Verinda, like, the, the big employers, um, are, I mean, in food and drink and government, of course, but yeah, the healthcare. Um, there's a lot, a lot of people working in healthcare, but definitely fewer large employers.
Yeah, and the main reason I asked was because, you know, you mentioned earlier about encourage, potentially encouraging the. The jobs in the higher pay band, I, and I would see healthcare potentially playing higher than some of the other. Items listed there, and so that's why I'm kind of curious to see. It's not a hospital that's driving the numbers, it's just, uh.
Yeah.
It's just smaller. Smaller dentists, a lot of little offices.
Uh, clinics and things, and um. You, you know, when we talked about um. Some of the employment density um, calculations, you know, two months ago, I think it was. Uh, one thing that we had sort of just had a brief discussion on, I, I think was about. You know, uh, a future office development or medical ops, larger medical ops development, so. Um, that certainly can, can play a role, could, could play a role in the future. All right, commuting, so, um. The jobs to housing ratio, talking about these vision twenty fifty and P S R C goals. Um, you know, jobs to housing ratio is mentioned a lot in the uh, multi county planning policies that, that Manny was mentioning earlier. Uh, there's a lot of regional goals around getting this closer to one. Um, it's so encouraging people to, you know, live nearer to their jobs. And uh, this has to do with obviously decreasing uh, traffic, greenhouse gas emissions. Um, also just, you know, increasing mobility, improving quality of life, all these type of things. Um, your jobs to housing ratio in Mill Creek is point seven five. It's not fa- that far from one compared to some places, you know, that we've seen, um, but there, there are regional goals towards that, so. Um, you know, we, we might lightly mention that in the economic development element. Um, looking at where people come from and to, uh, less than five percent of Mill Creek residents work in the city, about twenty five percent work in Seattle. Um, the most, most people work in Seattle, Everett, Bothell, Bellevue, so you know, larger. Uh, employment hubs regionally, obviously, and um, a lot of people who uh, work in Mill Creek. Uh, also live in Everett and Seattle, but, but a, a larger proportion of people who work in Mill Creek live nearby in smaller areas, which is pretty common.
Uh, if I could, just one second on that slide, could we maybe? I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, the jobs to housing ratio being point seven five. So that means if I had four houses, if I picked randomly four houses in Mill Creek, three of them have one person who works in them? Is that what that means?
Three of them have one person, uh, who works in Mill Creek.
Ah. So three hundred and twenty eight people live and work in Mill Creek?
Um. Yeah.
Okay, so there's like four hundred and fifty houses in Mill Creek? I'm, I'm a little, I, I think, yeah, I, I think.
Sorry, no, it's the.
You're understanding, I'm not, I'm confused by the, the two.
No, you're, you're right, I, I misspoke, it's um, it's um. Uh, the ratio of total jobs in the city to uh, total housing units in the city, yeah.
Okay, this, it doesn't have anything to do with our residents, it has to do with number of jobs.
Yeah, sorry, gosh.
Number of houses in the house.
You just put them on the same slide for some reason, it's the same space, yeah, you're right.
Sorry, I was. Obviously, I was not connecting with me.
No, yeah, I was uh, probably explaining it poorly, yeah, you're right, so. It's a ratio of the jobs in the city to housing units in the city, so, you know, if it's very low, then you've got a. A suburb with no commercial areas essentially, right? And if it's very high, then you've got maybe city with a ton of industrial and not very much residential. Um, so that's more of a, um, uh, they, they, it's. I, I think it's aspirationally related to people living and working near, you know, living when New York, they work or vice versa. Um, but obviously that, um, that's, that's not the same as the three hundred and twenty eight number, yeah. Sorry about that.
So, this is um. In, in this chart, you have five thousand eight hundred and thirty two, um, that's people, not families, right?
People, yes.
And they commute into Mill Creek to do their work.
Yeah.
Um, the preceding, the preceding chart indicated that there were a, a, a list of top employers.
Mm-hmm.
So are, are you in, is it, what's the correlation between the five thousand and these top employers? Are most of these people who are coming into Mill Creek working at these top employers, or what's happening?
Well, very few people both live and work in Mill Creek, so I would, I would say in general, most people who work in Mill Creek. Well, nearly all of them don't live in Mill Creek. Uh, so yeah, they would be working at those, but they would also be working everywhere else, there's not a direct correlation. Um, this is just the, the total commuting patterns for everybody who works in Mill Creek.
So, so given, given the, the, the relationship between the types of jobs. And the number of people commuting into Mill Creek. What do you envision the type of future people coming into Mill Creek to work? The same type of people, or do you consider them more middle and high income people, so on and so forth? Or, and the correlation to that is the type of. Multi how, types of housing that you're considering incorporating into Mill Creek, given these. Um, two charts.
Mm-hmm. Uh, well, I have a couple, uh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm just curious, what are you envisioning the types of housing that will occur? When a substantial number of people that are coming into Mill Creek are working in what I would call lower income housing?
I think that's a policy thing, right?
Yeah.
That's, that'd be us recommending, that'd be us.
Question for discussion.
That'd be us for, to recommend a policy for it.
Uh, remember Chris Collier presentation, um, last month about. Um, I'm not gonna use the word affordability, but really looking at our housing stock, what we have. As Mill Creek compared to our income, if we go back to the previous slide here, right? Somebody working at Lowe's is not making six figures, right? So how do we then balance affordable uh, with, with housing in Mill Creek? Um, I cannot remember how much a price of housing now is going in, uh, in the city of Mill Creek. But there is a, a huge gap between our median income and really people who really support us with our day to day, um.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, even if you think about teachers' salaries or income levels or. Police force, you know, a lot of those folks probably live in other communities because there are more housing options available. To them within their income levels, and so what this is leading to is, is maybe some policy around. Diversifying housing options so that more people can live here who work here. It's also, you know, maybe there's some policies around looking to support and encourage more living wage jobs. In the community, so you don't have an out of balance of low in, low income or low wage jobs, you know, in your community. But you have a good, healthy balance of different wages and salary level opportunities. So that kind of policymaking, I think, is what this is pointing to.
And this goes to support the previous discussion about livability, right? If we really want less cars in our community, which helps to promote our environment. And the air that we breathe in, then it helps that people live and work. In this, in the place that they, they call home, or the place that it's in a close proximity.
Yeah, I mean, I think it definitely goes both ways, you know, to your point, Commissioner Abrams, um. Certainly, if there's um, sort of increasing employment in, in, in Mill Creek, that there's a higher demand for housing at certain price points. Um, you know, but at the, on the other hand, uh, there's, it, it, so, so that could drive housing, you know, development. But I think that there's such a huge demand for housing, affordable housing and middle income housing, workforce housing, even high income housing all over the region. Um, a- as we've seen in, in all of our discussions about housing, um, that, that. I would be reticent to sort of um, suggest on a sort of policy level that, that there would be, you know. Uh, uh, that, that there would be increased housing demand at any particular price point, um, based on. Uh, the jobs that are in the city now, but I think what it does point to, like Manny said, is, uh, you know, going forward, having a, a healthy balance of different types of jobs. Um, you know, a- and also a balance of different types of, of housing, so that, you know, some of that im- imbalance, um. Can, can be, uh, you know, can shift every time.
Well, my only thought is that I understand the necessity to have the appropriate balance and diversity. Uh, but it seems to me that a little less emphasis should be placed on, uh, the types of housing. Um, and more uh, emphasis placed on diversifying the types of employment. Within the community.
Mm-hmm.
So that multiple types of housing can be developed, corresponding to different income levels. Um, but the way it is right now, it's basically saying that you have a substantial number of people who are moving or working in Mill Creek. Who have low income salaries. And I don't know if people want that, or do they want any uh, more equal and more diversified type of environment? What do people want, and that's policy, I understand that's policy. But also planning too.
Andrew. The one thing, the one thing is to keep in mind is that, um, you know, basically everybody working in Mill Creek is, is commuting in. So that does include the people who work at, you know, lowering in food service jobs, but it also includes all those physicians. And, you know, government employees, uh, who we saw earlier, uh, you know, the, the, they're, the top employers have the most employees. Um, for each, you know, company, but as we saw, there's a lot of smaller firms, uh, you know. Uh, smaller companies in healthcare and other fields, so I think, um, I think. There is maybe some of that going on, but I think that, you know, it's important to remember that basically. E- everybody's working in the city at every income level is, is coming in at this point. Sorry, Commissioner Nolan, go ahead.
Andrew, can I just ask you, I mean, the one thing we don't recognize, which is a. Post pandemic thing is this whole hybrid working environment where, which I think is. An attractive market for Mill Creek, we have the big homes, we have, I know several of my neighbors who, who hybrid work. So they're quote unquote employees of a, you know, tech company in the. On the Bellevue corridor or the Seattle corridor, but they're working two or three days a week from home. And it has P S R C caught up to recognize that, and is there a policy you'd recommend on that?
Yeah, P S R C has, um, well, they've, they've definitely released um, discussion of it and, you know, it's talked about in guidelines and things. Um, commerce as well, P S R C's. For, I'm just telling you, what, but their, their base level assertion that they, they say in their, in their documents is. That they uh, believe the accuracy of their jobs forecasting, um. Uh, irrespective of working from home, however, they also make a caveat that cities are welcome to, within reason, you know, account for some working from home. Um, in their sort of forecast and their plans. So they, they kind of, they, they want to have their cake and eat it too, as far as their, what their documents say, I, it seems to me. But yeah, they, they definitely discuss it, and I think it's important. And I think, you know, especially because it's still, I mean, it's been a few years, but. And, and I, reasonably, we would probably all expect that room and hybrid work for knowledge workers is going to continue at, at something like the current rates, but um. You know, going, looking at a twenty year plan, it's, it's something that I think at a high level could, could be talked about too, um. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Manny, or anybody else, I mean. Uh, it's, the, the, the challenge is, you know, are those jobs in Mill Creek? Uh, or, or to what degree?
Oh, oh, sorry. No, I think, I, I think Commissioner Nolan is. Pointing to the fact that there may even be a higher proportion of people working from home here because of. The types of homes that we have here and the, the types of jobs those people have. And uh, you know, I don't know if we have any data sources, Andrew, that we might be able to look into to kind of check that. Because I know that's one thing we, in our conversations with P S R C. They, they are willing to let us count a certain number of work from home jobs in our job um, forecasts. And as long as we can provide some kind of data to support that, so. We might just want to look into that and, and know that it might be a little higher here. Also because we, it, we clearly are a bedroom community, you know, removed from some of the employment centers, so might even be more. Might even be more prevalent here, just guessing, but.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we, what we've been doing is sort of looking at the industry mix of um. Of what sectors people who live in Mill Creek work in. Uh, and using that as sort of a proxy based on on regional data that we can get sort of at least huge and sound wide. There's data on um how many people are working from home, how many days a week by major sector. So we've been sort of using that as a proxy, you know, looking at the region. So what industries are people working from home? Well, as you said, tech and. And et cetera. Um, so. We can look into that for sure as we're getting to work on the economic development element and um and see if we can quantify that a little bit more to your point, Mandy. And that might help inform some of the discussion around.
Well, yeah, one thing I just like to mention from a standpoint, you know, usually jobs. Equate to some type of revenue for the city.
Mm hmm.
People that are working at home are not generating any revenue for the city. They're still making. Bill you in downtown Seattle are still getting all the credit for that. And I don't know if that plays into this comprehensive plan, but I think it's an important point.
Mm hmm.
One thing more you'll free to work on, Manny.
Yeah, I I think the the way in which they. The the way in which they they may be contributing to the local economy would be by patronizing local businesses um during the day. That they otherwise wouldn't be uh if they were um going to Seattle. But yes, I mean, from the job itself, tax perspective, for sure. And I think that's a challenge that a lot of places are.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In light of um Commissioner Abrams' comments, I agree with him that um since a large portion of the. The the biggest employers are in the food industry, that's not a high generating revenue and it's more of a low income uh group. And we're if to help accommodate for the eighty eight hundred people that are commuting. Out of Mill Creek and that that revenue is lost during the daytime, the working hours, the frequenting restaurants or whatever stores. And to also increase and maintain the um the market rate uh apartments. Um, is there a possibility to zone? I know we're considering in sub area plan having multifamily hu- housing and mixed use. Is there an option to zone some of that as office, large office space that would specifically accommodate large corporations? That way we would bring the higher income revenue in.
Yes, I I think that the opportunity would be to allow a flexible framework for mixed use.
Mm hmm.
But again, could be responding to the market. Now, right now, overall, the the market for office is very soft and part of that is work from home dynamics, but also just. You know, there's just less need for as much office space as we had decades ago. However, if, you know, if somebody were really interested in having a satellite headquarters or. Some kind of a, you know, corporate uh presence here in Mill Creek just because of. Livability here, how great it is, you know, that maybe they would wanna have a an office space here. Next to the bus rapid transit that also connects to Light Rail. Um, so I think when we look at the zoning. To be able to allow, you know, not not require residential only, but to allow. Other mixed uses as the market demands could be important, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Can I, um, this might be a strange way to go about it, but if we're talking policy, then I think we could actually talk about this. Um, if what we're saying is that we want less low income jobs. Could we raise the minimum wage to make it le- less low? We can, I mean, I realize we can raise the minimum wage over what the state requires and that Seattle and some other cities do that. We are currently at the state minimum wage, for example, in Mill Creek. Um, that is one way in which you certainly raise the lowest end. Um, right there. Now, how that affects everything else? But it's potentially a policy to explore as relates to jobs in Mill Creek.
And I I think it be could be written exactly like that to explore the potential. For a minimum wage increase in Mill Creek, you know, because maybe a special study is needed for that, but yeah.
Or at least a recommended uh living wage type thing, which.
Yeah.
Interesting idea. We'll put it on the list.
And also to maybe consider the health of the, what is the health of of the businesses here? We have a lot of vacant, vacant. Mixed use property over at the farm and over here as well. So can the employers afford to pay those higher wages? Can we afford to lose any more employers?
It's a balance, yeah.
Yeah. Well, uh, we had, I had put together, uh, following this, um, a couple slides just, um. To get the the wheels turning, but which are already turning, but let's just go to the next slide, so and um. You know, when 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 we were just uh thinking about what what economic development means in the context of of Mill Creek in a suburban environment. Um, you know, these are some things, some of which we've already been talking about, you know, tax revenue, certainly, sales tax producing businesses have already been brought up today. Place making amenities, um, town center and in the in the sub area, small businesses and entrepreneurship. One thing that um I think came up really early on in the planning process was the Chamber of Commerce and. Um, we'd be happy to get in touch with them if uh it it seems, you know, anyone in commission thinks it would be a good idea for us to. To interface with them um. Uh, in this planning process. Uh, medical and healthcare, uh, you know, that includes all the small medical businesses we've already been talking about, but also as we were mentioning. Uh, you know, the potential for maybe recruiting something larger in the future, corporate satellite, um. You know, I think as Mandy pointed out, you know, the location of Mill Creek is if a lot of people are working from home, it could be an ideal location for some. A smaller um branch of some office or people don't have to commute as far. Um, and then other niches, I just put this on here to to think about, you know, I mean, there there's there's certainly. Uh, other jurisdictions nearby that have a an economic niche, if it's, uh, you know. Biotech or life sciences in Bothell, we got wine in Woodinville, you know, et cetera. Uh, so. Uh, i- if if there's ideas floating around or or things that you um. You feel that we might want to explore or or think about adding in 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 terms of Mill Creek's sort of specific uh unique. Characteristics from an employment perspective, um, we'd be here about this.
Actually, just pointing out that medical and healthcare, that might actually, this might be where there might be crossover, say, in. Designing for uh retirement facilities, et cetera, is that that may generate more of those healthcare jobs.
Mm hmm.
In the area. So there are balances, of course, and how they play together.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
So I have a question. You know, the um, the um. I don't, I don't know if it's a life science, whatever it is, it's near the um. It's right across the street from Starbucks, near Canyon Lake, near four oh five. Does anybody know? Yeah, it's right near, right next to Phillips that they just built that. Well, if you're ever down there, they built a true, a new uh science center of some kind. And I know it relates to um. Well, how do I say this? It um, it, I know the desire to build there is. At at one point, because of four oh five, it's very close for transit, but. Do you guys, are you guys aware of that that structure that's been built there? And do you guys have any insight as to why that area was selected for that type of building? Uh, because you have to ask yourself, yes, where, wh- why can't Mill Creek develop something like?
Mm hmm. That I think it's a good thing to research.
Mm hmm.
I don't know the name of this, so so Phillips.
I I know the area. I I'm not sure I know the exact building. Mandy, you know a lot about Canyon Park, though.
Yeah, and I know, we also know people in Bothell that we can contact to learn more.
For sure.
It's right next to, it's right next to Phillips. It's a, it's a very attractive building.
Hmm.
Um, it's, I think it just recently opened. And I'm just curious, why aren't we thinking about?
Was it biotech, biotech?
Could be a biotech.
Oh, so that's like a pharmaceutical, isn't it?
And well, and Phillips there is Phillips Healthcare, so they make like pacemakers, they design, they do engineering for pacemakers and.
See, there you go.
Things like that.
So again, the the issue is, like you were saying. Um, why can't we be thinking out of the box?
Mm hmm.
Um, why can't we be thinking about trying to find? Um, businesses, corporate satellites, corporate centers. Where that type of um economy can be incorporated into Mill Creek. There are occasions to do that.
I I think it's a great thing to build some policy around, you know, a lot of cities do have economic development staff. Your city is very small, uh, so we don't, we don't have that yet, I don't believe. Um, but it's something that you could work towards and that, you know, often the role of that person or staff is to. Recruit or market specific opportunities, you know, vacant buildings or redevelopment areas. That could be available for, you know, certain corporate uses or campuses, so. Um, it it's definitely a great thing to aspire to.
We have a thirty year plan here, right?
Right, twenty anyway, twenty plus.
We could find something within twenty years.
Yeah.
And can can the marketing department actually have, is this? I don't even know if this is something that's done by cities, but can they go and recruit like Boeing or recruit aerospace, which is such a big thing around here? They have a whole bunch up in Marysville as well, to recruit them uh to to let the word be known, to to. Say, hey, we have a new policy that is allowing large corporations to for a mixed use space.
It is, it is done. And again, I think we could look at some policy language, but it would require your city to maybe prioritize some. Funding or budgeting to support staffing for that kind of recruiting, you know, probably a full time position, you know.
There is also the potential for working with uh existing people. Uh, the county has an aerospace economic development person. Who is Terry Ryan, he used to be a council member here and he lives in the city, so.
Perfect.
Um, there's, there's one that we could make a contact with, uh, but.
So leverage partnerships.
Leveraging partnerships, but trying to get him to convince them that uh the bus rapid transit access here is really an advantage. For them to get good workers into the area. And if we build nice, if we build aesthetically pleasing housing. That is right next to where somebody works and a lot of restaurants and dance clubs and things like that, all in one neighborhood.
Yeah.
There you go, but it's a, that's a twenty year plan.
Well, and I mean, something that you said earlier, Commissioner Riles, about um kind of the. The relationship between aging in place, accessibility, healthcare, medical, dental. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, maybe Mill Creek could become a blue zone. You know, you read about the blue zones where older people live longer because of the access that they have to. Healthy food and active living and services, so you know, maybe that's something to aspire to. That's pretty lofty, but.
And I think. We have to take into consideration, you know, what, what could we put in our comprehensive plan that makes in our zoning and everything? That makes this a better spot to build than the four oh five.
Yeah.
You know, get rid of a hundred and sixty four so people can get here. I mean, there's. Not trying to be Debbie Downer here, but do we have a big piece of property, somebody could build a complex like the one down next to Phillips?
Not, well, so that someone could, they could certainly put together a number of.
Okay.
Properties and make it happen, right? And then, I mean, for example, Tim Panos owns the Safeway, right? Well, that's, that's a large enough footprint to make a decent sized business. But currently, it's a grocery store and it's a great space for a grocery store. That's what it is. It'd take a lot of likely redevelopment. Um, and building, and it'd mean we wouldn't have a grocery store there for a while, so.
Yeah, and it would take a a big shift, like Mandy was saying, towards office. Not not that that couldn't occur in twenty years, but I think we'd see that happening in, you know, five years. But I mean, it's true that, um, you know, you, what you don't have, for example, is a ton of industrial land, right? The big, somebody you mentioned Marysville, they have the Cascade Industrial Center. So, you know, that's, that's a different type of thing in the sense of manufacturing or some sort of larger scale economic activity like that. But yeah, from the office perspective, uh, you know, and and um. You know, I don't know, I I I think there's also some possibility to build on the fact that you already have a lot of. You know, small businesses in various sectors and and it you you could, certainly, we can develop some some policies around attracting. Um, a larger business and hubs, but uh, you know, could also, I don't know, I'm just sort of speculating about having, you know, creating space and opportunity for. Um, new small businesses, uh, that could be in a variety of different sectors and it doesn't just have to be restaurants.
Cool.
Um, did we saw the slide I I. We may be now getting into reiteration, but this was um, uh, some of the. These are the goals that were in the previous complaint around economic development. They're gen- pretty general, but I think, you know, mostly still. Um, decent and valid, uh, robust and diverse local economy, commitment to land use, environmental values. We've, we've heard that from you tonight already as well. Um, capital facilities projects, we hadn't talked much about infrastructure, but um, you know, like you were saying a minute ago, um. Uh, certainly, the circulation and pedestrian is in here. I mean, uh, seems like we need to talk about transit in there too. Um, cooperatively with local businesses, uh, climate friendly, sustainable business and and equitable tax structure. Um, so that's the, that's where we're starting from, those goals from the last plan, and we'll, like you saw with the land use, we'll work, work with those and um. Uh, and and all the stuff we've been talking about today, um, and uh as we draft this element in the next couple of months, um. And I think there was one more slide, uh, which also just, um, you know. We've been looking through the PSRC and county policies, things that weren't really mentioned in those older goals. That are regional priorities now, um, coming down from the PSRC in the county, are a lot of things we've already talked about tonight. Um, mid living wage jobs, uh, supportive environment for business startups, small businesses, minority owned businesses. Jobs housing balance, uh, mitigating business displacement uh in redevelopment. So that could be something to think about in the sub area, and and I think we did talk about that last week with the council, um. Uh, in terms of, you know, tenting local businesses or or trying to ensure that, uh, if redevelopment occurs or when it occurs, that. There's some provisions made for existing local businesses. Um, commercial affordability, uh, proximity to transit is in there, but certainly something we need to talk about in the, in the revised element. Uh, and then this sort of potential for um export, and again, it wouldn't be manufacturing, uh, but you know. Uh, there may be some small potential there, so. Um.
And Andrew, I think based on the conversation tonight, I think we need to come up with some language that. You know, indicates a move towards a dedicated economic development staff.
Mm hmm.
And I I would just looked up, you know, we're doing some work with the city of Sea-Tac, which is not a big city. Even though it's, you know, in the urban area, it's about thirty thousand people, but they have two economic development staff people. You guys are at twenty thousand. So, you know, within twenty years, I think it's a realistic thing to think of moving towards that, so, yeah.
They also have an airport, though. Well, what, I was just gonna say, what is their jobs to housing ratio?
Well, the airport technically is, um. Uh, jobs are not counted in their jobs, as I recall, Mandy, right?
Well, yeah, it's complicated.
It's complicated, yeah.
Mandy, in that light, um, I I like Benjamin Riles' uh proposal about the aerospace economic development. Is there a way that that, I don't know how this works, but can the the city get a grant to subcontract with them? Would that be cheaper than hiring an FTE? To uh be able to consider reaching the higher, higher, the corporations, larger corporations?
We could consider an interlocal agreement with a jurisdiction that has staff, uh, that kind of staff, that's a possibility.
That would be cool, yeah.
I I I think partnerships to that point, Commissioner, um, gave all that partnerships and and, you know, leveraging that type of thing. Especially given the side of Mill Creek is something we should craft some sort of revised language around it here too, because. Uh, as things progress over time, um, yeah, things like what Justin, Justin mentioned could be really helpful.
Yeah.
I have one other question. Um, we haven't mentioned annexation at all.
Hmm.
Is that something that is in your uh horizon?
Yes, it, we did mention it earlier, uh, when we were talking about land use, and so it is mentioned there. And it's something that we wouldn't be actively annexing. Um, land as part of this comprehensive plan update, but it's something that we want to create policy for that. Would, that the city would explore that in the next twenty years, um. Specifically to the west, there are areas that we've talked about in past meetings that. Could, you know, um, could have potential for annexation, but I think if you remember, um, Commissioner, is it Geiger? No. Yeah, what's, how do we, Geiger, yeah. He was, he was an engineer. I I remember an earlier conversation where he was saying, well, we have to be careful. Because when we annex these older areas, we also annex those utility systems and those outdated stormwater systems and. Outdated stormwater systems and and whatnot, so we become responsible for those. So you would want to do an a specific annexation study to really understand that.
Annexation was talked in those goals and policies about. It, yeah, it hasn't been overlooked, it was in that stuff.
So it's just really pointing you towards, you need to study that to determine if it's the right move, but yeah.
These smaller suburban areas like Mill Creek uh live next to. Bothell, which is becoming larger and Everett is larger than both of us put together.
Right.
And um if you were to do some annexation issues, or at least consider them. You can then bring into the equation larger corporate enterprise. Okay, especially in the areas that are annexed. Um there, for example, the areas surrounding the golf course, the golf. Um whatever they call that area, the uh. Driving range and on one thirty second next to the, that's a huge area. Very close to transit. Where you could consider building there, a corporate kind of enterprise. So, um that, that's in Everett, so that would have to be something that's annexed. I believe it's in.
If it's, well, it have to be in the unincorporated.
I can't tell you if it is.
Okay.
It's in the city of Everett's Muga, not in the city of Mill Creek's Muga.
But I mean, I think you're, to your point, though, they're in your Muga, which is the. Met, is it the metropolitan urban growth area? Municipal, thank you, I couldn't think of the word. Um, you know, the, you have area that's out towards Costco and I five, which is, has desirability. To certain sectors. Um not Costco, Walmart, thank you. Looking confused. And and some kind of va- uh not vacant, but um definitely some underdeveloped parcels around that area. Um and the other thing that's kind of interesting about that area is it's closer to where the Light Rail corridor. Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's no reason why, when you're talking about cross referencing between sections, you know, if there is. If there is uh an an discussion of annexation in that direction, um you know, we could cross reference that with the potential for economic development, too.
Yep. Well, this has been a great discussion. Do we have one more slide that's talk about next steps?
Is there one more?
Every time Civil sets down.
I think that's the last one.
Well, I think um Kara, if you're there.
I am, hello.
You are, look at how quick you you responded. Could you just give us a sense of what we're going to be doing next? Because my mind is not clear on that at the moment, I apologize.
Yes, so on March twenty first, um Andrew will be bringing the draft housing goals and policies, we'll introduce this content. And then folks will have about three weeks to review.
Okay.
And then um in April, in the April meeting, we'll discuss that. Housing content and the way that we discussed the land use today, and then we'll introduce the economic development goals and policies um in April.
Great. So we're giving you a little bit of a break then on reviews, but that will be short lived. Cause then we'll have several consecutive months of review, just so you know, yeah. Okay.
I have, may I, do we have time for one more question?
Oh, I, yeah.
Okay, um. So on this really good presentation you had last time at the joint meeting, on this page, um. Purpose of the Mill Creek Boulevard, Sub Area Planning, you have a little stickies, cool little stickies here in this graphics, and it says. The farm development is a test run for mixed use in Mill Creek. How's that test run going in farm, in the farm development?
Well, I think it's building out in phases, uh perhaps. Other commissioners could speak to that and how that's going in terms, are you talking about economic performance?
I think economic performance, just, I've just noticed the vacancies, my husband has, I haven't been down there recently.
Oh, yeah.
Just curious how that's going, cause if that's a blueprint for how it's going to work here.
Yeah, I think, are they vacancies at ground floor level?
Yeah.
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 That's a common um challenge that communities have. And sometimes it has to do with zoning, so we can take a look at that, because perhaps zoning has been. Uh very limiting in terms of the types of uses that are allowed at ground floor. And so you can do things like allow residential use at ground floor for a certain time period. Or, you know, not just retail, commercial, but other types of services, office uses, things like that. To help fill those spaces. But the idea is, as you bring more people in to live in those areas. Then that builds more customer demand for services, restaurants and retail, so, yeah.
I would. I would also add that the market has changed since the farm. Um, one of the things that, I wasn't here when the farm started, but one, one of the things that was, was um part of the concept is a hotel. Is that um? And and that, of course, we know the market is not going to support that at all. So between when the conception or when this, you know, when the idea was bubbling, and now, there are. Things that have, are of course. Um out of our control, right? So it's now going back to zoning and making sure that we work with the farm to. Either do a live work unit or something that will um. Would occupy the lower ground levels, but one, one of the things is the market has changed drastically since then.
Yeah, at at the farm, there's. Uh I believe six buildings, A uh A through F. Some of them are standalone commercial buildings, they're the one, one story ones, A, B, C, and D, those ones are almost entirely rented out. Yeah, there is the ground floor of buildings E and F, which have been a struggle to get activated um. For a couple of reasons, one, there actually was a plan to put a hotel in there, it was very close to being permitted. It fell through due to um construction costs during COVID. They are now being outfitted as um. Uh as uh not live work units, but like very similar live work units, where they're, the whole ground floor is being um. Uh it's building, built now, um but they haven't ren- they're not rented out yet, cause they're still finishing up those units. They just received their certificate of occupancy. A couple of weeks ago.
That's great. So um a few months ago, I had suggested, um I think at the time you guys didn't have an idea where you're going to be putting, hadn't decided officially where the offices would be. For the city, as you were planning mixed use development. And I had suggested putting it in the um. You know, with the, underneath the mixed housing, having it rezoned for offices and having city offices there. What do you think about instead? If, I mean, first the idea possibly, like we discussed, that recruiting larger corporations possibly. And larger building space down there, and maybe even second floor, I don't know, can offices go up to second floor? And they can, right? So um, what do you think about moving some of the offices over there, some of the city offices over at the farm?
The police.
There, there is actually a a police satellite station that's being outfitted at the farm and building uh building F. I don't think there's any big plan for the city to move its municipal office over there, it's not very centrally located, so it's sort of the corner of the city.
Yeah, I was thinking other, like other, like um, I don't know, smaller groups like fish and wildlife, if that building is not going to remain or.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah, one thing you consider is that um the ground for the farm, what they really wanted to do in those spaces are still empty, they want to put housing in there. But they're not allowed by their development agreement to put housing there, they want to live work units, but we were not able to allow that based on the agreement. So there is demand for something to be there, it is not, it's not what allowed is currently.
Is that kind of a lesson learned, what you just mentioned there, like, you know, you said that a housing unit, if if they could build a housing unit on the first floor. They would, I mean, that seems like a policy thing potentially to consider, right? I know everything we talked about in division for the sub area relies about that uh. You know, the the five over one, six over one, where you assume the ground floor. Be some sort of business, but you just gave us an example there. They would have liked, they they would have given some flexibility if you could do a full housing from first floor up.
Yeah, one thing that staff has been toying around with is uh creating a form based code. For the sub area, which has less focus on the uses allowed and more focused on the structure of the building, so making sure it looks. How I want it to look in the built form, and then having more flexibility with what the, what would go in those spaces. Um I mean, sometimes a built form determines what can go in those spaces, of course, um but that is a possibility for sub area.
So I think we're about wrapped up on our discussion. Okay, so great, thank you, staff, and uh. Our contractors for such a good presentation and leading a great discussion, so we'll close up the uh. That part, our comprehensive plan discussions, and so there's anything for the good of the order? No? Okay, good. So then, uh can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn? Seconded.
Second, a motion has been moved and seconded to adjourn, any discussion? Hmm, sure, good. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are officially adjourned at eight oh three. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.